This is several members of our high school orchestra and our chamber strings. And they're performing for us tonight, and they're under the direction of Brenna Evans. And thank you for being here. Thank you very much. The Medfield String Program. Having another great year, so we appreciate that with the successful guest artist Moxie Strings Clinic and a concert in March. And just a week later, the Medfield High School Orchestra earned a gold Superior Rating at the MICCA Concert Festival. So thank you very, very much. They get to play another couple minutes for us. We are still short of a quorum. So we're still about, that's why we haven't begun. So we're still about 20 folks short of having our 250 required members of the town meeting to constitute a quorum. Medfield has a very high quorum. Many towns have a very, very small quorum. They think it turns out more people because of the threat of a small cohort being able to come in and capture the town meeting. We've always had what is a very high quorum compared to other towns of our size. Not that, not that big a quorum when you figure that we have 8,800 registered voters and we're looking for a quorum of 250. But that's where we're at at the moment, and we're in touch here with the front desk. And as soon as we get to 250, we'll begin the meeting. Okay, good evening and welcome to the 2015 Annual Town Meeting. I'm Scott McDermott, your moderator, and once again honored to be here to preside over this meeting and to have the opportunity to go forward with the 2015 Annual Town Meeting. I thank you for being here as a member of our legislative body. I particularly thank you for being here to continue the great work of building our community. And thank you for being here to continue in a heritage that extends all the way back to 1651. I am advised by our town clerk that we have a quorum present, so particularly thank you for being there. Tonight, we have 40 articles to address, and we were honored to have the chamber strings. And I will now ask our town clerk to read the return of service of the warrant.
By virtue of this warrant, I have notified and warned the inhabitants of the town of Medfield qualified to vote in elections and at town meetings by posting attested copies of same at five public places seven days before the date of the election as within directed. Constable Robert Flaherty dated April 8th, 2015.
Okay, thank you. We're ready to go. I'd be honored to invite all the veterans in the audience if you would, if you could please stand. Good. Thank you. And now I'd ask everyone else to please stand, and we'd ask our veterans to lead us if they would in the Pledge of Allegiance. Yeah, well, thank you. And please remain standing. I'm very pleased to introduce Medfield High School senior Julia Clifford for a return engagement after our special town meeting to sing the National Anthem. Okay, if you'd remain standing for one moment. I just want to, in memoriam, we just do a moment of silence for former participants in Medfield Civic Affairs and Town Government who have passed away over the, over the past year. Ruth Nadler, Council on Aging. Andrew F. Thompson, Park and Recreation Deputy Moderator, Safety Committee. Blanchard Warren, Committee for the Master Plan, Town Common and Parking, Committee to Study North Street. Frederick A. Rogers, Jr., the American with Disabilities Compliance Review Committee, the Architectural Barriers Committee, National Organization on Disability, parking clerk and hearing officer. Jane McCarty, a member of the Warrant Committee, the Charter Commission, and the Town Government Study Group. Rosalind Tullman was a member of the Council on Aging. Richard Nickerson, who was on Park and Recreation. And just a word about Jack Peterson, the voice of Medfield. So if we could just pause for a moment to remember. Okay, thank you very much. You can be seated. Now the introductions of our town officials on the stage. First, I have the honor of introducing our town clerk to my right, Carol Mayer. And then consistent with our tradition, I would ask the chairman of the Board of Selectmen, Richard DeSor, going to introduce the members of the executive branch of government.
On my left, next to our town clerk, is Evelyn Clark, the Administrative Assistant, who has given 27 years of service to the town. Next to her is Christine Trewiler, our Assistant Town Administrator for the past 17 years. Next to my immediate left is Mike Sullivan, our legendary town administrator, who is currently in his 40th year serving Medfield. And I believe the longest-serving town administrator in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I don't know if you heard that in the applause, but Mike is currently the longest-serving town administrator in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. Next to, next to me, on my immediate right is Mark Fisher, a selectman who is in his seventh year serving the residents of Medfield. Next to Mark is Selectman Pete Peterson in his 15th year as a selectman. And on our far, my far right is our town council, Mark Sorrell, who has served the town for the past 21 years.
What a veteran team. I'd ask Michael Markucci if he could introduce the warrant committee.
I don't think collectively we have 40 years. But we'll begin on my right, far right, with Sharon Tetro, Tom Marie, Martha Festa, Barbara Gips, Rob Skloff, Greg Sullivan, and Nick Ethanasiadis.
Thank you very much. This is only my 13th year, so I'm just getting started with this. Okay. Visitors. At this time, I make a motion to permit non-voting participants to sit within the town meeting and to speak to the community as requested. We reserve a special visitors section of this meeting for this purpose. And I would ask Evelyn Clark, our Administrative Secretary to the Board of Selectmen, to read the names.
Jeffrey Marsden, Superintendent of Schools. Kenneth Feeney, Superintendent of Public Works. Christine Trewiler, Assistant Town Administrator. Mark Sorrell, Town Council. Joy Richudo, Town Accountant. Sarah Raposa, Town Planner. John Naff, Building Commissioner. Roberta Lynch, Council on Aging Director. Kevin Ryder, Park and Recreation Director. Kristin Chin, Library Director. Yvonne Remillard, Principal Assessor. And Monique Allen from the Garden Continuum.
Great. Could I ask Kevin to please stand? Welcome, Kevin, who is new. Welcome. Thank you very much. And Kristin Chin? Welcome. Thank you. Welcome to Medfield. And Yvonne? Thank you. Welcome. We welcome you. We thank you all for your service. I move that non-voting guests sitting within the visitor section be permitted to sit within the town meeting and to speak to the community as requested. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, the motion carries. Our meeting guidelines are set forth in pages one through four of the report on the warrant, so I'm going to dispense with reading that full set of guidelines. I do want to reference on page two, the note of discretionary time limits. Sometimes the hardest part of this job is to balance an open and full dialogue with the need for expediency and dispatch. Tonight, we have 40 articles to consider, so on occasion, expedience could be the prevailing force. In terms of our treatment of our articles tonight, we'll begin as we always do by addressing the consent calendar, and then we will follow those with the personnel matters, Articles 13 and 14. And then I have linked certain groupings of articles that would be considered together. So when one of the articles of, of the following articles is selected through our lottery system, we will address all of the articles in these groupings in order. Article 15 and 16 will be grouped together. They are our budgets. Articles 18, 19, and 20 will be linked together. They relate to the OPEB Trust. Articles 24, 25, and 26 will be linked together. They relate to our land and our property up at the former Medfield State Hospital. Articles 30 and 31 are linked. Those are code amendments that are offered by the Town Charter and Bylaw Review Committee. And Articles 32, 33, 34, and 35 will be linked. Those are zoning bylaws issues offered by the Planning Board, all four of which will require a two-thirds vote. Our report on the warrant of the annual town meeting is an important document for our deliberation. As I said, the guidelines are on pages one through four. I also want to recommend statements, prefatory remarks made by the chairman of the Warrant Committee, Michael Markucci, and also a review of the town finances that are offered on page 10 by the Board of Selectmen. These are worth taking a look at, if not tonight, at another time. And additionally, there is a summary of all the revenue, expenditures, appropriations, and debt that can be found on pages 16 through 18. And finally, for those of you who would like to keep score, there's an index in the back of tonight's warrant articles in the final three pages. I would now ask Michael Markucci, chairman of the Warrant Committee, to make some prefatory remarks.
Thank you, Scott. As noted, there are somewhat longer remarks set out in the warrant. I'm sure you've all read them in great detail. Whether you have or you haven't, I'm sure you don't want to hear me read them out loud. So I'm just going to make two quick observations before we start. The first is, the two goals that the Warrant Committee had this year in the budget process were to be able to recommend a budget to the town that would not require an operating override and would draw less money from the town's cash reserves than last year. And I'm pleased to say that if the town meeting adopts a budget somewhat close to what we've recommended, there will be no need for an operating override, and the draw on the cash reserves will be about $400,000 less than last year. And it is our hope that next year, that draw on the reserves will be even lower. To achieve this, we needed the help and cooperation of all of the town departments. And I want to particularly thank the School Department and the Highway Department, Ken Feeney and Dr. Marsden for their cooperation in this process. They both worked with us to come to a budget number that would provide the services the town needs within the guidance we had given, because we had been hoping to avoid, to minimize the tax increases necessary from the operating budget as we are in the process of making a variety of capital improvements, particularly with the highway garage and the public safety building and the associated tax increases. We've also emphasized over the past several years, the need for town departments to cooperate with each other to reduce expenses. That's improved each year. And this year, the town is going to save about $100,000 because of the efforts of the town departments to group together to purchase utilities. And on that front, the town's energy manager, Andrew Seaman, and Mike LaFrancesca from the Schools Department deserve a lot of credit, along with Martha Festa on the Warrant Committee. And again, on behalf of the Warrant Committee, thank you for being here tonight, and we appreciate your attention to the important matters we're going to discuss. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. I would now ask Mike Sullivan, our town administrator, to offer a couple of remarks.
The town will be borrowing $18,700,000 May 12th, so pray for low interest rates. Everything associated with that borrowing has been included in the budget you will act on tonight with one exception. The interest rate for the $18 million bond issue, we will not know until the bonds are sold on May 12th. A half a percentage point difference in the rate is $90,000 in the appropriation, so we have made the decision not to include those funds in the budget. When we know the actual interest rate, we will notify the assessors. The treasurer has the ability to notify the assessors to raise funds to cover debt service payment. So we're hoping, we have estimated that $18 million to come in at a 4% interest rate. If it comes in at 3%, that's $180,000 less, so we decided not to put those funds in the budget for appropriation this time, because then you would have to raise them on your tax rate. So other than that, everything is in there. There will be a couple of holes on the budgets, very small amounts. I think they total about $30,000 total for your water budget, your sewer budget, and your assessors' budget. So when we get to the operating budget, there will be a hold on those. Other than that, we, at the special town meeting, we discussed it was going to be a tough year because of the borrowing, because a lot of the bonds that we're floating, floated in the past, won't be paid off till the end of fiscal '16. But in order to take advantage of the low interest rate environment, we decided to go ahead and borrow the funds as soon as possible, because we're anticipating the interest rates will probably rise over the summer. And one year of pain is better than 20 years of pain. So as a result, you can expect that the tax levy will go up somewhere between 7.5% and 8% this year. We're hoping that's a one-year effect and that it will, that the increase will drop down into the 2.5% range where it has been the past few years. But it is going to bite you next year when you get your tax bills. Next year is also a full revaluation year. Every three years, we're required by the Commonwealth to do a full revaluation on the property. So I can't tell you how your individual tax bill will be affected, because it depends whether your house is going up faster or slower than other houses in terms of property values. And that can differ between neighborhoods, between style of houses and whatnot. But I do want to reiterate what Mike Markucci said about thanking the department heads for their cooperation. We've asked them to try to keep their budgets in line for a number of years now, since the recession started, and we've had a great deal of cooperation from them. We know it was a particularly difficult winter this past year. The snow deficit over and above what we budgeted last year, as of today, stood at $329,000. We are budgeting in our tax rate estimate, a snow deficit of $200,000. That means we're $129,000 short. We're hoping to get those funds when we have the FEMA Federal Emergency Management Administration reimbursement. There was special legislation just passed that allows you to spread that out over a number of years. We're hoping not to do that. We're hoping that with the $200,000 we're carrying, plus the money from FEMA, we will cover the entire snow deficit this year. And that's about it. I think we are hoping that we don't have any snow next year, but I wouldn't count on it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Michael. A consent calendar is used for expediency, efficiency, and deliberate dispatch by acting upon certain articles as a group. For reference, you can see pages 19 and 20 of the report of the warrant. So I will now identify the articles to be placed on the 2015 Consent Calendar. And as I read the brief synopsis, if you would like further discussion on any of these articles, please signify by saying "hold." If held, the subject article will be placed back into our lottery system. For passage, Article 2, to accept the report of town officers. Article 3, to accept the perpetual trust fund for the care of the Vine Lake Cemetery. Article 4, reauthorize the fire alarm revolving fund. Article 5, reauthorize the ambulance revolving fund. Article 6, reauthorize the advanced life support revolving fund. Article 7, reauthorize the community gardens revolving fund. Article 8, to reauthorize the rental income revolving fund. Article 9, to reauthorize the library revolving fund. Article 10, to reauthorize the respiratory care revolving fund. Article 11, to accept provisions of Section 4 of Chapter 73 of the Acts of 1986 regarding certain tax exemptions. And for dismissal, Article 27, to see if the town would appropriate funds for the design of an addition to the center at Medfield. I will now offer a motion that Articles 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11 be passed as printed in the warrant, and that Article 27 be dismissed. Do I have a second? Second, so moved. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Declare that it passes unanimously. Okay, we'll first consider Article number 13, which is one of the Personnel Board articles. And I would ask Warrant Committee member Sharon Tetro for a motion.
Move that the town fix the salary and compensation of the following elected officers: Moderator, Town Clerk, Selectmen, Assessors, School Committee, Trustees of the Public Library, Park and Recreation Commissioners, Planning Board, Housing Authority and Trust Fund Commissioners by adopting the Warrant Committee recommendations as printed in the warrant.
Okay. And does there a report?
Section 9.3 of the Town Charter reads as follows: Elected officers shall be compensated in an amount authorized by town meeting and provided for by a town meeting appropriation.
Thank you. Before we put that motion to a vote, are there any questions or comments? If not, we'll put it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Article 14. Article 14 is an article to amend the Personnel Administration Plan, classifications of positions and pay schedules as set forth on page 27 of the warrant. And Warrant Committee member Sharon Tetro has a motion.
Move that the town amend the Personnel Administration Plan and Classification of Positions and Pay Schedule effective July 1st, 2015, as set out in the warrant.
Thank you. And do you have a report?
This article reflects the cost of living increase as recommended by the Personnel Board. The cost of the 2% increase recommended by the Personnel Board, the Board of Selectmen, and the Warrant Committee is $103,908. It is included in the various departmental budget recommendations in Article 17, Operating Budget. By state statute, School Department personnel are not covered by the town's personnel plan and bylaw. Salaries of town departmental personnels covered by collective bargaining agreements are set by collective bargaining contracts, even though they are listed under this plan and schedule.
Okay, are there any questions and comments on this article? If there are none, we'll put it to a vote. All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Opposed? I'll deem that it passes unanimously. Okay, we'll go to our lottery now. Our first article is Article 24. Article 24 is linked with Articles 25 and 26, all concerned the former Medfield State Hospital. On Article 24, it's an article to appropriate funds for the former state hospital master plan and studies. You can find it on page 53 of the warrant report. And Warrant Committee member Barbara Gips, do you have a motion?
I do. Move that the town appropriate $150,000 said sum to be raised on the fiscal '16 tax levy for the purpose of hiring consultants, engineers, and/or attorneys to advise a town on matters concerning the disposition and reuse and/or environmental site remediation for the former Medfield State Hospital property, including preparation of a site and/or townwide master plans. And said funds to be expended under the direction of the Board of Selectmen, with the understanding that Board of Selectmen may authorize any other town board, commission, committee, or department to expend a portion of said funds for said purposes.
Great, thank you. Do you have a report?
The Warrant Committee recommends $150,000 for the purposes of hiring consultants, engineers, and attorneys to advise a town on matters considering the disposition and reuse and for the environmental site remediation of the former Medfield State Hospital property. The money being asked for this year is to support continuation of the process that the town has undertaken for a number of years to ensure that the state hospital property is repurposed in a manner that best supports the interests of the town. Appropriating this money does not commit the town to any particular use of the state hospital property. It simply provides the town with the expertise needed to develop plans for the town to consider in the future. It supports a thorough consideration of the opportunities for public input and review of how the property can be used in ways supported by town residents, and then helping the town achieve its long-term goals. Given that owning the state hospital property costs the town more than $500,000 annually, the town needs to make a fully informed decision about its future, not to let the property sit there while the town decides what to do with it. Hopefully, the master plan for the community, for the property can be completed during fiscal year '16, and any recommended changes to the zoning regulations will be available for discussion at next year's town meeting. To reiterate, this article is not about whether the state hospital should be developed or not. It is about whether the town should have the information it needs to make an informed choice about the future of the state hospital. Given the importance of the state hospital property, the Warrant Committee believes that the expertise funded by this article will give the people of the town that information. The debate over whether to move forward with development will happen in the future, and in the committee's view, next year.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Mr. Hardy, microphone number one.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, of this annual town meeting. I rise somewhat reluctantly, because I realize that I am talking to the town meeting without the support of perhaps anybody up on the dais. I want you to know that I've gone to every meeting that has been held on the subject of the state hospital. And any attempt to talk about open space, recreation, environmental protection, water issues, whatever they might be, other than development, have been dismissed, as we've heard that already. I think the town should be on notice that there's a real push for very, very quick action to sell off this property to a developer. And you will hear that that's not so. You will hear that we have made, as we just heard from Barbara, that there's been no decision, that this is not a vote on whether we keep it open, whether we sell it. But in point of fact, we know that the Board of Selectmen years ago signed off on a 440-unit sale that was going to be done by-
John, I'm going to interrupt you. Do you have an opinion on the appropriation of the $150,000?
I do.
Okay, could you give us that, please?
All right, the $150,000, Mr. Moderator, thank you for asking, is on top of $175,000 last year. $100,000 was left over from last year's appropriation. That was voted on April 7th by the Selectmen to be used to bind a contract already made with VHB, a 1,000-person consulting firm, offices coast to coast, foreign Massachusetts. They have, the consultant works on large projects. For example, Danvers, I believe it was 75 acres, 500 units of housing. They have done Hawkinson at the Western Nurseries, where they had 970 units planned in a small area. They have done numerous other projects, including Devens, Fort Devens. They're doing the Westwood project down on 128. This is not a small developer who's looking to come in here and make paths for riding or hiking. This is not a developer who is going to be concerned about the open nature of much of Medfield. This is a developer who, on the night that they met with this committee, said, "I can see six or 700 housing units up here." That was from the project manager, who's coming in to be their key representative to the town. Now, I thought Mr. Nolan was going to get up here and make a presentation in support of the article. the article, but clearly, the article has been seen as a fait accompli. I would hope that town meeting would assert its position, its rightful position, and not approve this article, vote it down. They have $100,000 for the first phase of what they have proposed to the town as a three-phase project. The first phase is supposed to come up with a general plan. The second phase is to be... come back to the... I guess, to a town meeting, and ask for the... to ask for guidelines on the zoning to be approved. And the third phase is to go ahead with a developer. Mr. Nolan's on record. I could read you what he has said in the past. He's the chairman, and he runs the committee pretty tightly. But he has said in the past that he wants a developer to come in here and to take down those buildings. If a developer comes in here and takes down those buildings, the developer has to put up, has to put up extensive housing.
John, I'm gonna limit us to the motion that's on the floor, which is an appropriation, and you're opposed to that appropriation.
I am, Scott. And you know, Scott, this is the most important article on this town warrant.
In your opinion.
Pardon?
For you, in your opinion, I'm not sure...
Well, I think that for the town it is, because it's determinative of where the town is going. Do we want open space here, or don't we? Do we want playing fields for our youth, or don't we? Do we want a possibility of some cultural activity up there?
That's not what the article is asking.
Well, the article is asking for what Mr. Sullivan wanted to include in the article to give the Selectmen carte blanche and moving ahead. And I am suggesting to you, Mr. Moderator, that this town meeting should assert its own, its own legislative prerogative, and say, “We're gonna withhold those funds until we see what the... on the basis of their first phase, they come back to a town meeting and say, ‘This is what we're doing.’” Then you can prove me wrong if they have come up here with a fair choice, where they're supposed to come up with three different alternatives for the town. Right now, I can promise you, they're gonna come up with one.
Let me just be clear, I'm not trying to prove you right or wrong. I just want you to address the motion that's before the town meeting.
The motion is, I want the motion dismissed.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Nolan, microphone two.
Steve Nolan, I'm chair of the Master Planning Committee, although John's already explained my position on this, I guess, but without giving me a chance to actually address it myself. This article addresses our need for hiring a consultant, which I think the consensus at town meeting was, we wanted to acquire this property, but also that we needed to plan for its future. We, on the Master Planning Committee, went through an extensive process over the past eight months to select a consultant that we thought was best able to help guide the town in coming up with a master plan for the property. We have not predisposed anybody to a development up there. I think that it is a possibility that we'll have some housing constructed up there, and we presented that at town meeting last year as a possible scenario when we recommended purchase of the property, so I don't think it's a surprise that that's one of the possible options for the property. But we've also asked the consultant to look at the no-build alternative, you know, open space, cultural facilities, a lot of other options that the town might have for developing the property. The purpose of hiring the consultant is to help us do an open planning process. We need to come back to town meeting to get approval for rezoning of the property in order to do anything up there, so the idea that we should first come with a proposal and then hire the consultant to come up with a plan seems absurd to me. We're hoping to have an open and fully participatory process, and we really urge everybody to be involved in that. It's gonna unfold over the next six to nine months. We're making our first meeting with a consultant next week, actually, to really kick off the process. We have tried to use social media to reach out to everybody, to let everybody know what's happening at the property, and to get everybody involved in the planning, so we urge you to pay attention and come out and express your views, because our hope is that when we come back to town meeting with a recommendation, it will already be something that the community fully supports, so that it'll pass easily at town meeting. I think it'd be foolhardy for us to come up with a plan in the dark and present it to town meeting and expect it to be passed without the residents participating in that process. So I urge you to support this article so that we can commence the planning process, and I think it's gonna be a good process. The committee we have is a strong committee, and it's a very open process, and we invite anybody to come to any of our meetings and express their views, so thanks very much.
Okay, are there any other questions or comments? Mr. Moderator, Mr. Peterson.
The Board of Selectmen voted unanimously in favor of this article. It is for planning money, to plan what is going to happen at the Medfield State Hospital, and I think that it behooves the town to plan and figure it out. This is the start of a very exciting process for the town, and when you talk to these... when you hear the planners come in and talk to the committee, it is really startlingly exciting as to what the possibilities are there. No one has decided what's gonna happen. This is money to enable that process to unfold. Selectmen are totally in favor.
Any other questions or comments? Approach microphone number one, please. Thank you.
Christopher Smick, One Twenty Pine Street. Listening to both sides of this, unless I've misunderstood, there is already money available for consultant. Dismissing this article would not stop that process. It sounds to me as if it might provide a useful check and balance on this. I have been in town for a while, I've watched the state hospital process for a while, I've seen ideas gain tremendous momentum. Unless I've misunderstood, it sounds like dismissing this article would not stop the planning process. It would not deprive the town of a consultant, but it might just deprive a little momentum.
The money that's available at the moment is for working on the remediation of the C and D area still, and hiring the planner to do the master planning for the hospital site. There is not enough money in the till right now to do those things. That is why this additional $150,000 has been proposed. It is needed to do the planning process this year.
Mr. Peterson? Is there any... anybody else wanna make a comment? If not, I'm gonna go back, and Mr. Harney, you'll have a minute, and Mr. Nolan, you'll have a minute, and then we'll take this matter to a vote.
I certainly endorse what Mr. Smick said. He absolutely reflects my opinion. But Mr. Peterson is not in consort with the Assistant Town Administrator, who told me that there was money available for the attorney and for the LSP, for the cleanup, which is almost complete, as he well knows anyway. As far as Mr. Nolan's saying that there's nothing predetermined, I could read you what Mr. Nolan said on December second, which is about the day we closed the deal with the state. Mr. Nolan said at that time, “The Selectmen appointed the Master Planning Committee to work on putting the property out to bid to developers, who will ultimately decide how to deal with the existing buildings.” So that proves that Mr. Nolan, at least, believes that the developers... that should go to developers, it won't be our land, our town, our future, it will be the developer's land, and the developer's plan, and the developer's control of the use in the future, and that will be massive amounts of housing with all of the consequential costs thereof. Now, you can dismiss this and say, “We'll put an act of faith in the people who are up there,” but believe me, I have not seen many of them over the years working the heavy... doing the heavy work that John Thompson, Bill Massaro, and some other people. I didn't see them throwing the power of the townhouse when we...
Thank you, John. Mr. Nolan? Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I just wanted to clarify one point on the amounts. There is $100,000 available from last year's similar article on consultants, which would be an initial payment towards the consultant. Our total consultant budget was... is $193, the price that VHB proposed for three phases. First phase being the planning, second phase being developing the zoning that would feed from the planning, third phase being if there's a disposition, they would help us to work out a disposition process. The Warrant Committee suggested that we not fully fund the third phase, and that we wait until next year's town meeting to do that. In the event that we did approve the zoning, we would then go through the disposition process. So this article's a little smaller than the amount we initially requested. There's also monies that are needed for continued remediation work that aren't in the current amounts that have been set aside, so this will fund both additional monies for the remediation, as well as that second phase of the work, but not the third phase.
Okay.
I don't know what Mr. Nolan just said. There is $100,000 that the Selectmen approved at their April seventh meeting, not waiting for this town meeting, where they would have been asking for a quarter of a million dollars, effectively, but they approved it and sent it after I asked them not to, out of respect for town meeting. That money was sent, binding the contract. The contract exists, and the... and VHB there can indeed start drawing those funds down on a schedule we know not of at this point. So it's up to you, ladies and gentlemen. It's up to you, whether you want to take back some...
We'll take that as your cue. It's up to them. So we're gonna put this to a motion. The motion to a vote, if we could? Thank you, Mr. Harney. Okay, let's put this to a vote, if we could. The motion was as offered for the appropriation of the $150,000. All in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, if I could have a show of hands. All in favor, please raise your hand. All opposed? I'm gonna deem that the motion carries. Article Number Twenty-five. Article Number Twenty-five is an article to appropriate funds for the maintenance and security at the former Medfield State Hospital. That article can be found on page fifty-four of the warrant report, and Barbara Gibbs, do you have a motion?
I do. Move that the town appropriate $175,000, said sum to be raised on the fiscal year sixteen tax levy, for the purpose of providing ongoing maintenance and security at the site of the former state hospital. Until the future of the state hospital site is determined, the property must be maintained and kept secure. The requested funds will provide for mowing, snow plowing, securing the buildings, providing security, and other essential services. The Warrant Committee recommends passage of this.
And do you have a report?
That was my report.
That was the report. Okay, excuse me, recommends passage. Okay, questions or comments on Article Twenty-five?
Hi, my name is John Thompson, and Four Oh Six Main Street. I'm the chairman of the Buildings and Grounds Committee for the Medfield State Hospital, and my committee consists of the police chief, the fire chief, Paul Hinckley from the Medfield Housing Board, and Bobby Kennedy from the Public Works Department. And so this is the part of the hospital work that must remain ongoing while the Master Planning Committee does its work to decide the future uses at the hospital. The town purchased the property on December fourth, 2014. On March fourteenth, at special town meeting appropriated $150,000 for maintenance and security. The three largest categories at the hospital are the grounds cost, the maintenance costs, and security costs. As of April twenty-seventh, there was an existing balance remaining of $83,909.04. The work completed to date includes a security detail company which mans the front gate from six PM at night until six AM in the morning. So all night long, there's a paid security consultant that watches the front gate. The other work has been to board up some of the windows that were broken open, and also, we're planning on installing some fencing and gating at the front entrance. So if you wanna go up and take a walk, you can drive up and park in the parking lot in front of the gate. So this appropriation will cover the ongoing security expenses, which will run until April of 2016. It also will include the mowing cost, and the cost of mowing this property is not something you'd want in your own yard. I think it's about ninety acres, which need to be continually mowed so that it doesn't grow up during the summer. Those costs are expected to be between $40,000 and $100,000 a year. An RFP is coming out in May. The maintenance... ongoing maintenance includes boarding up windows and securing entryways, some tree removal. Some of the trees have blown down during storms and so forth, and one of the other considerations we have before us now is to install a limited number of surveillance cameras at the hospital property, just in the interest of safety, because there's many people that use the property. So that's all I have. If anybody has a question, feel free to ask.
Want to stay if there is any questions? Are there any questions for Mr. Thompson? If there are not, any further discussion? We'll put Article Twenty-five to a vote. It's a motion to appropriate funds for the maintenance and security at the former state hospital. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I'll deem that it carries unanimously. Article Twenty-six. Article Twenty-six is a article to authorize the disposition of surplus equipment, furnishings, and materials at the former state hospital site, and establish a special stabilization fund from proceeds of such to help with the maintenance and security costs at the site. Can be found on page fifty-four of the report on the warrant. Again, Barbara Gibbs, do you have a motion?
I really don't have all the articles, so I just wanted to say that. Article Twenty-six, move that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell, trade, and otherwise convey surplus and/or obsolete equipment, furnishings, and supplies, but not building or land located on the grounds or in the buildings of the former state hospital site, provided that any funds received by the town from such transactions be deposited in a special state hospital maintenance and security stabilization fund, as provided under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Five B, to be used to maintain and secure the property until such times a determination and/or disposition of the property is made.
Okay, a report?
Report. Since the town took possession of the former state hospital property, town employees and residents have noticed that certain items of no use to the town, but of some residual and/or scrap value, are located on the building and the grounds. If allowed to remain on the site, their value may diminish, and they could... and/or they might deteriorate to the point where it would cost the town more to remove them. Authorizing the Selectmen to dispose of such materials, and authorizing the town meeting to use any funds derived to maintain and secure the property would seem to make sense. The Warrant Committee recommends passage.
Are there any questions or comments on Article Twenty-six?
Jerry Kazanich in Seventy-Seven Granite Street. Back in the nineties, the Troop Eighty-Nine Boy Scouts, we had one of the buildings up there, and we left quite a bit of stuff behind when the state said we could no longer be there. So we're like, “This is very important to us. There's a lot of equipment, furnishings, even glass doorknobs that sell for $50 apiece these days.” So getting in there and assessing what we have, and getting the Boy Scouts back their equipment, we... very important to the town.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? If there are none, we'll put it... Article Twenty-six, the motion to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Deems it carries unanimously. And I just would like to affirm for everybody that, I think, the key point that Mr. Harney made, Mr. Nolan made, which this is a very strategic issue for the town, as we all know. It merits and kind of demands all of us to pay attention to this issue going forward, so I hope we will be a lot of activity in this area, and I look forward to all of you paying close attention, so as we come back to town meeting, we're as informed as we can possibly be. Okay, back to the lottery. Next article is Article Number Thirty-two. Article Number Thirty-two is one of four articles having to do with zoning. These articles will be linked, and we will take them in order, Articles Number Thirty-two, Thirty-three, Thirty-four, and Thirty-five. Article Number Thirty-two is an article to authorize the Building Commissioner to make certain findings under MGL, Chapter Forty-A, Paragraph Six. All four of these articles will require a two-thirds vote for passage, and I would ask Gregory Sullivan if you have a motion for us.
I do. Move that the town amend the code of the Town of Medfield, Massachusetts, Chapter Three Hundred, zoning Article Nine, nonconforming uses, structures, and lots, Paragraph Nine Point One, application of nonconformity by adding a new Section C to read as set out in the warrant.
And do you have a report?
I do. This proposed bylaw amendment grants the authority of the Building Commissioner to make certain findings under Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty-A, Six. Upon passage, the ZBA will require the Building Commissioner to document his or her findings using an approved form that will become part of the ZBA's file. The Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals recommend passage of this article to streamline permitting of certain residential improvement projects.
Any questions and comments on this article, Article Thirty-two? If there are none, we will put it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Deems it carries by the two-thirds required. I needed a... excuse me. Before the vote, I needed a report from the Planning Board. Mr. Brown?
Well, I'll just do this once for all four, and that way we'll save a lot of time, even though we've already done the one.
We may need you to speak separately to the third article as we talk about...
Glad to do that, but as to our report, pursuant to the provisions of Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty-A, Section Five, as amended, the Medfield Planning Board held a public hearing on Monday, March second, 2015, commencing at eight oh five at the townhouse, to consider amending the zoning bylaws as set out in Articles Thirty-two through Thirty-five, and as proposed by the Planning Board. The public hearing was duly posted and advert... The public hearing was duly posted and advertised in the Medfield Press on February 13th and 20th, 2015. The hearing was continued until March 16th, at which time no one at the hearing spoke in opposition to the Articles, and the Planning Board voted unanimously to recommend passage of all four Articles, 32 to 35.
Okay, well, thank you. We're going to put Article 32 to a vote again. Again, requiring two-thirds for passage. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I deem it carries by the required two-thirds vote. Okay, we move on to Article 33. Article 33 is an article to amend the code of the Town of Medfield, Chapter 300, zoning, to clarify methodology for calculating building heights. This article can be found on page 60 of the warrant report. And Mr. Sullivan, do you have a motion?
I do. Move that the town amend the code of the Town of Medfield, Massachusetts, Chapter 300, zoning Article 2, definitions, to add a definition for height in appropriate alphabetical order to read as set out in the warrant.
A report, please.
The warrant committee has unanimously voted in favor of passage of the warrant article amending the definition of height in the zoning bylaw. The present definition of height of a building is so general and without specifics as to make the present definition useless for the purposes it was placed in the zoning bylaws. It defines height as the vertical distance from the adjacent ground to the top of the structure. Given that the adjacent ground around the building is not a constant level, one part of the ground at the building could be significantly higher or lower than other parts of the building. Also, the ground around the building can be easily manipulated to allow for buildings to be constructed much higher than the zoning bylaws typically would allow. For example, would be building a 45-foot-tall house with a walk-in basement and garage, but then push 10 feet or more of dirt around against one side of the home. This would allow a home that is clearly taller than allowed by the zoning bylaws to be in conformance with the 35-foot height restriction. The new revised definition clearly defines how a building is to be measured at the ground level and what is considered the top of a structure. This revision brings Medfield's definition into line with the standard definition for building height used in almost all other towns and cities, as well as in the Massachusetts Building Code. The warrant committee strongly recommends passage of this article, creating a more clearly-defined definition of building height.
Questions or comments on this article? If there are none, we'll put it to a vote. Requires a two-thirds vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Deem that it passes by the required two-thirds. Article 34. Article 34, we do not have a positive motion from the warrant committee. We'll get a positive motion from the floor, from Mr. Brown and the Planning Board.
Move that the town amend the code of the Town of Medfield, Massachusetts, Chapter 300, zoning Article 6, Paragraph 6.3, height and bulk regulations. Attachment 3, Table of Height and Bulk Regulations, by eliminating the column permitted heights stories as set out in the warrant.
Okay, well, thank you. We're going to have two minority reports. The first is going to be from Greg Sullivan.
The warrant committee has split its vote on this warrant article with three recommending passage and three recommending dismissal and one abstention. Because of the split vote, the warrant article is submitting two opposing reports on this article. The warrant committee members in favor of passage feel that this article revising Attachment 3, Table of Height and Bulk Regulations, will provide a clear understanding of the restrictions regulating building heights and will be consistent with the Massachusetts Building Code. This change will not lessen the ability of the zoning bylaws to restrict the height and bulk of buildings in Medfield. The elimination of the column permitted height stories will not affect the ability of the table to restrict the height of buildings. The use of the columns maximum height feet, along with the maximum floor area ratio and the maximum lot coverage in the Table of Height and Bulk Regulations are more than sufficient to clearly define and restrict the height, size, and area of buildings as intended. The present Table of Height and Bulk Regulations references both height by stories and height by feet. With the column of the table referencing the limits of height and feet is clearly understood, the table referencing height and stories is less clear and can actually create confusion because of the references in the column to half stories. Neither the Medfield zoning bylaws nor the Massachusetts Building Code contains a definition of what a half story is. This lack of a definition of a half story creates confusion over how to apply such a designation. It really does not restrict structures to the referent half story, but can actually allow a full additional story. The town should also know that during the Planning Board's presentation of the warrant committee, the committee inquired about this change to designing bylaws in relation to the pending project at 363 Main Street presently under consideration. The Planning Board made very clear that this bylaw change was proposed before the Board knew the Main Street project was being planned. The Planning Board also made clear that this change to the zoning bylaws would not lessen the height and building area restrictions for this proposed project or any other new projects. The intent of this article is not to introduce opportunities to add additional building height to buildings, but to remove confusing language from the zoning bylaws and make the height restrictions in the zoning bylaw table easier to understand and apply. Those warrant committee members in favor of this article recommend passage of this article to more clearly define building height.
Okay, and we have another report from Mr. Murray.
The views of the three members who recommend dismissal of Article 34 are as follows. Building codes are sets of regulations governing the design, construction, alteration, and maintenance of structures. They specify the minimum requirements to adequately safeguard the health, safety, and welfare of building occupants. Taken together, the zoning rules provide some consistency between buildings and enhance the value of everyone's homes by having a predictable appearance between structures. We assume most people who move and stay in Medfield are generally happy with our town. When any change is proposed, the burden is on those proposing the change to demonstrate why it is needed. Here, we have seen no evidence of a need to eliminate the two-and-a-half-story limit on construction in the residential district, plural, where it applies. While there might be some inconsistency in its interpretation, we have seen no evidence that this is a significant problem in town. A three-story, flat-top building is different from a two-floor house with a peaked roof, maybe with dormers or a finished attic. We have not heard from any townspeople who are concerned that the Building Commissioner has applied the two-and-a-half-story limit unevenly or unfairly. In short, we don't see a real problem with the current limit and do not know how the change may affect the aesthetics of new construction in our town. In the absence of a real problem, this seems like change for change's sake. We are not opposed to this change forever and are entirely appreciative of the hard work put forth by the Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals, but would like to see more evidence of the need for the change before recommending that the town adopt it.
Thank you. We have a motion from the floor from Mr. Brown. Are there any questions or comments for the Planning Board or for members of the warrant committee? Microphone number one.
Philip, 14 Summer Street. I'd like to hear from the Selectmen on this issue.
The Board of Selectmen is also divided, two in favor. I was opposed. My reason in opposition is that residents have raised the concern that while the height is still capped at 35 feet, this zoning change might encourage more three-story buildings instead of the current peak two-and-a-half-story structures. The residents have questioned what impact this might have on neighborhoods. The current concern is coming from those on East Main Street, concerned about what impact a proposed assisted living development will have on their neighborhood and on the historic setting of the Peak House. The proposed facility will be roughly in the area behind the Peak House. Now, I don't know if it will or will not have an impact, but questions remain. And what about other parts of town in the future? Will there be a negative impact on other neighborhoods? My suggestion is we hold off on this for a year until we get a clearer picture of what impact this change will have on our neighborhoods. Again, in agreement with the last minority report of the warrant committee, I see no urgency of having this being passed right now. I'd rather wait a year, make sure that this is something that's in the best interest for our neighborhoods, rather than pass it now to find out later on we should change it. Let's take the year, make sure that what we really want, and then come back at next year's town meeting and see if all concerns are addressed. So my vote was no on that. The other two board members said yes.
Microphone number two.
David Temple, 300 South Street. I'm speaking as an individual, but I happen to be the co-chair of the Historical Commission and president of the Historical Society. Obviously, we're, I'm an advocate for historic preservation, but we're also advocates for good design. On the Historical Commission, we have two architects. I'm not one, but I've read probably 20 or 30 books on architectural history and design so I can do my job better. Speaking personally, I'm deeply concerned about allowing three-story buildings in Medfield instead of limiting them to two-and-a-half stories. Here's why. This has to do with LCB senior living. It's an out-of-town builder seeking to make money in Medfield. They're planning a 75-unit senior housing complex on Main Street opposite Pound Street, as Richard was mentioning. It will be behind the Peak House and the Clark Tavern. The little Peak House has been on the National Register of Historic Places for decades, and the tavern could well end up on it as well. From the Peak House to the center of town, we have Medfield's crown jewels, two more National Register properties. The street is uniquely rich in historic houses and architectural gems. It's easy to miss it when you're focused on the brake lights ahead of you, but take a look at the houses, feast your eyes on them. The styles include post-medieval English, colonial vernacular, farmhouse, Gothic revival, Queen Anne Victorian, Second Empire Italianate carpet, or Eastlake shingle, and there's even a stick-style house. You don't find variety like this in Florida or Texas or California. This is what makes Medfield Medfield. The senior housing units will be taller than any of these houses. With a two-and-a-half-story limit, the buildings will have a peaked roof with dormer windows. It's big, but it's still something that is somewhat of a Medfield look. But if you allow three stories, LCB senior living can put up three massive-looking buildings, three full stories high with a flat roof. These buildings could have all the charm of a Hampton Inn or a warehouse. Maybe that's okay for Route 9 in Framingham, but please, not for Route 109 in Medfield. No matter what they say they'll do, any builder can build to the fullest extent of the bylaw. The builder might promise to dress them up somehow, but they wouldn't be required to, and they'd still dwarf the other houses. This would be like putting lipstick on a pig. Not for Medfield, please. I ask everyone to vote an emphatic no on this article. And I also think that it would, Stephen Brown should have disclosed that, I think, that he is selling his, the land to LCB Development.
Okay. Further comments, questions? Microphone number one. Thank you, Mr. Temple.
John Holly, 367 Main Street. So just a point of clarification. So we're talking across the board changes here, right? So this is a residential district that most of us live in today that can be changed to full three stories with a flat roof housing, correct? Just want to make sure I'm reading all the zoning properly, that's all. Is there a way to get clarification on that, or is that good? Yeah?
The Planning Board.
I think Mr. Sullivan gave a very good summary. There is no definition of half-story in the Medfield bylaws. So today, what does it mean to say two-and-a-half stories? People get around it in all sorts of ways. This is not a suggestion by the Planning Board that we go to three-story buildings. It's in fact to provide clarity. We have three choices. Keep what we have in the law, which is not clear, in which the ZBA, the Planning Board, Building Commissioner, Town Planner, all thought needed to be clarified. Go to a definition of the half-story, which we struggled with and couldn't come up with, as many towns have not, or have the motion that we have here. We suggested the latter. So to answer your question, it's across the board, but it will not allow things that can't already be done under the laws that we have.
Okay, well, thank you. One more comment? Did that answer your question?
It does. So I, so I think it's clear that a special permit could be requested, and a three-story building could be built in the residential area then. So I just wanted to support the points that were brought up previously, that there is a project being proposed that does seem to be benefiting by the change in this bylaw. 25,000-square-foot building, three stories tall, as the previous speaker spoke to. So I want to thank for the thoughtful nature of the warrant committee that thought through the process here and is suggesting that we think through this fully before we make any changes to the bylaws. Thank you.
Thank you. Final comment, and microphone number one.
Don Cohen, 368 Main Street. I think the, just want to address some of the things Mr. Brown just said, that I think other towns seem to be able to define what a half-story is, and I'm sure with the intellectual firepower we have here in Medfield that we can come up with one, too. And, you know, I think that just saying, throwing our hands up and saying, "Well, developers can do anything anyways because we don't have a definition," is not really a way to go. I think, again, we can, we can come up with something that, that will protect the aesthetics of the town in any neighborhood, not just in East Main Street. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. Final comment?
Joanne Bragg, 340 Main Street. I would like to thank Mr. Disorga. I also agree with his sentiment about what's the hurry? We don't really understand what the consequences would be if this change were to be implemented. So I would also like to ask why this, sorry, why not take the time to think through this and potentially consider zoning district on a district basis by basis, especially if there are projects proposed like the one that's being discussed today?
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to put this to a vote. This is, again, the motion on Article 34 to amend the zoning bylaw to clarify the definition of a half a story. It does require a two-thirds vote for passage. All in favor of the motion on Article 34, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I'm going to declare that it does not pass by the two-thirds required. Article 35. Article 35 is an article to amend the zoning bylaw, lot coverage definition, the Table of the Area Regulations under Chapter 300, and allow for relief in the form of a special permit. Can be found on page 62 of the warrant report. And we have a Planning Board, the, Mr. Sorrell, the initial Planning Board report by Mr. Brown, that covered all four articles. Is that sufficient? Okay. So, back to Mr. Sullivan. Do you have a motion?
Move that the town amend the code of the Town of Medfield, Massachusetts, Chapter 300, zoning Article 6, area height and bulk regulations, Paragraph 6.3, height and bulk regulations, by adding a new Section E to read as set out in the warrant.
And do you have a report, please?
I do. The purpose of this bylaw amendment is to add a section which would allow the Board of Appeals to review and approve on a case-by-case basis additional impervious surface for the recreational structures with the requirement of onsite infiltration of any precipitation on the excess area. Upon passage, the ZBA will amend its rules and regulations to reflect appropriate plan, submittal, requirements, and technical specifications.
Questions or comments on Article 35? Microphone number one.
Peter Feldman, 44 Pleasant Street, which is in the RU District, the only district in the town that permits two-family dwellings. This may turn into a motion to withdraw RU from the consideration of the motion. But the RU District, if you look at the prior page, speaks about lot coverage of 35%. And since impervious services for driveways are not considered in that number, on a 20,000-square-foot lot, we have houses on Pleasant Street and on the surrounding streets where lot coverage, if you think of structures that are poured or built, I'd suggest is way over 50%. Since the way these houses are built is that they are, we don't have a real definition of what a two-family house is either. Since those houses are two single-family houses that are bolted together with two driveways, I could see a situation in the RU District where a person would come in wanting two additional 5% increments, raising it from, I'd say, 50% up to 60%. If someone is in the residential estate district or the residential town district, this is probably not anywhere near the problem it is in the most densely populated, densely-built-on part of Medfield. But I would suggest at minimum that the RU District should be exempted from the effect of this rule.
Mr. Sorrell?
Just, just for clarification, this only applies to recreational structures. We enacted a similar provision several years back, more than several now, for setbacks so that people that have tennis courts, basketball courts, swimming pools, that sort of thing would have some flexibility if there wasn't any objection from neighbors, for instance. And this is, all this applies to is recreational structures. It does not apply to somebody's initial house footprint.
Okay, does that answer the query? If it does, we'll put the motion to a vote. On Article 35, all in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Please, if you would, raise your hand. It requires a two-thirds vote. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? I'm going to deem it carries by the required two-thirds vote. I'm going to deem it carries by the required two-thirds vote. Next article is Article 25, which we already covered. Article 17. Article 17 is an article to appropriate sewer betterment paid in advance to Sewer Betterment Stabilization Fund, found on page 50 of the warrant report. And Mr. Marie, do you have a motion for us?
Move that the town transfer $163,669.40 from sewer betterments paid in advance to the sewer stabilization fund, established under Article 31 of the 2004 Annual Town Meeting in accordance with the provisions of General Law, Chapter 40, Section 5B, as amended by Chapter 46 of the Acts of 2003.
Do you have a report?
Indeed. The town has borrowed funds for 20 years to construct sewers in various parts of the town. Abutters to the sewer lines are assessed for this betterment and can pay this assessment all at once or over five, 10, or 20 years. Because of the low interest rates and the mortgage interest deductions, many have paid off the betterment in its entirety. To recapture the interest lost on these payoffs and to spread the repayment of sewer debt over the life of the issued bonds, the funds can be placed in an interest-bearing stabilization fund and a portion appropriated annually as an offset to the principal and interest payments included in the operating budgets. The amount requested to be transferred to the sewer stabilization fund this year is The balance in this fund as of December 31, 2014, was $1,513,207. The operating budget recommendations propose to transfer $400 from this fund to help pay for the principal and interest costs on fiscal year 16 general fund sewer debt. Unless new sewer projects are approved, the last of these bonds will be paid off in fiscal year 2022, after which this stabilization fund will be dissolved.
Okay, well, thank you, because this pertains to the movement of funds in a stabilization fund. It does require a two-thirds vote. Are there any questions or comments on Article 17 or on the motion? If there are none, we'll put it to a vote. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? I'll deem it carries by the required two-thirds votes. Okay, Article 16 is the capital budget, so we'll do Article 15, the operating budget, and Article 16 are capital budgets together. I'm going to follow the same procedure we've followed in the past on the operating budget, which we'll do first. For the operating budget, I'm going to read the various categories as listed in the warrant report. And if you want to place a hold on any of these categories, please just loudly call out a hold, and then we will go back and we'll consider all of the items that were not held, and then we'll consider the items that were held, and then we will vote on the overall budget. So here I go. Workers' compensation insurance, health and life insurance, liability insurance, unemployment compensation, Medicare insurance, county retirement contribution, selectmen salaries, selectmen operations, town administrator salaries, town administrator operations, Warrant Committee operations, town accountant salaries, town accountant operations, assessors' salaries, assessors' operations. Okay, we have a hold on assessors' operations. Treasurer-collector salaries, treasurer-collectors' operations, town council operations, human resource salaries, human resource operations, information technology salaries, information technology operations, town clerk and election registrar salaries, town clerk and election registrar operations, conservation commission salaries, conservation commission operations, planning salaries, planning operations, zoning and appeals operations, town hall public building and property maintenance salary, town hall public building property maintenance operations, town report meeting salaries, town report meeting operations, police administrative operations, police operation salary, police operation operations, traffic marking and signs operations, traffic, school traffic salaries, school traffic operations, fire and rescue administration salary, fire and rescue administration operations, fire and rescue operations salaries, fire and rescue operations operations, inspection salaries, inspection operations, sealer salary, sealer operations, MEMA operations, animal control salaries, animal control operations, tree care salaries, tree care operations, highway salaries, highway operations, snow and ice salaries, snow and ice operations. Was that on snow and ice operations? Street lighting operations, town garage operations, equipment repair and maintenance salaries, equipment repair and maintenance operations, sidewalk operations, public works and utilities operations, solid waste disposal salaries, solid waste disposal operations, cemetery salaries, cemetery operations, health operations, public health nurse operations, mental health nurse operations, council on aging personnel, council on aging operations, veterans' salaries, veterans' operations, outreach salaries, outreach operations, library salaries, library operations, park and recreation salaries, park and recreation operations, historical commission operations, grave marker flags operations, Memorial Day, Veterans Day operations, arts cultural council, stabilization reserve fund, town debt principal, town debt interest, regional vocational school operations, school personnel, school administrative operations, water salaries, water operations, water reserve fund, sewer salaries, sewer operations, sewer reserve fund. So the first thing that we're going to do is we're going to vote on all of those items that were not held. And are there any questions or comments on any of these items? Before we go back to the held items, if there's not, we'll put them to a vote. It requires two-thirds of passage. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Deems it carries by the two-thirds requirement. So we are now going to look at the holds. The first hold was on assessors' operation. Somebody like to step forward to microphone number one or two and address this?
Tom Sweeney, Chairman of the Board of Assessors. We would like to change operations from 15 -- total now is 25,572 to 41,142. Reasoning behind that is we have a revaluation coming up, and we had the figures come in by the consultant, and it was much higher than we had put aside for it. And we were told by the Department of Revenue, this has to be done, so we had no choice other than to come back to town meeting for the funds.
Okay, so we have an amendment on line 011412, assessors' operations, to change the number 25,572 to 41,142? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, we'll put that to a vote. Requires two-thirds. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Okay, that will carry. The next hold was on line item 01423-2, snow and ice operations. Somebody please approach, microphone number one.
Buster Starr from Five Ledge Tree Road. How does this operations affect the overrun here? Where does the money come from? Does this include paying for the overrun, or?
For the snow and ice?
Yes.
The -- these funds are for fiscal 16. The overrun is for fiscal 15, the current year we're currently in. We exceeded this current year fiscal 15's budget by, as I mentioned earlier, 329,000. We are budgeting in our tax rate estimate an additional 200,000 to cover that 329,000, and we are anticipating getting enough money from reimbursement from the Federal Emergency Management to cover the rest of that 329,000. So this is for next year's budget, which you're voting on now. The deficit is for the current year.
Right.
And we are providing funds we think sufficient to cover that deficit in our tax rate.
With this year's tax rate, right?
Well, it will be, the 200,000 for the deficit will be on, will be raised next year as part of the fiscal 16 tax rate, because we've already set the tax rate for fiscal 15. So you can't increase the taxes midstream, so it will have to be raised on fiscal 16s.
Okay, so any of the money that we save in the town meeting here for voting down articles or proposals, is that, can that be directed towards this deficit?
It can, and that's what we're doing. We're setting aside 200,000 in our estimate to cover the deficit. So in other words, we're saying, we know we've got a 329,000 deficit that we've got to pay off, raise the money next year. We're raising 200,000 of that when we're setting next year's tax rate, because we'll carry that as an expense item, and then the other 129,000.
But we can go beyond that. We can go beyond and do the whole, do the whole sum, right?
Well, we're hoping we have enough. Between the 200,000 and 129,000 from 15, we're hoping that we will cover the whole amount.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. I'm going to release the hold on line item 014232. That brings us to under water operations, and that is line 60-410-2.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Christian Carpenter with the Board of Water and Sewage. Subsequent to printing the warrant, we worked with Superintendent Finney to slightly adjust the approach on budgeting, and so would like to make the following motion with respect to the water budget. Account number 60410-2 operations to be set at $454,400, and a new line, emergency reserve fund for water, to be set at $50,000.
Okay, so on those two, we have under line item 60410-2 with the item to read 454,400, and item 60410-2 on the water reserve -- excuse me, did I get that one? Yeah, no, 604102 on water operations to, for the item to be amended by allocating $50,000?
In the warrant as printed, it's only called a water reserve fund.
Okay.
The board is proposing that it be labeled an emergency reserve fund, and it would be subject to board approval before it could be accessed by the superintendent.
Okay, so we have a motion. We've already been -- okay, the Warrant Committee has passed on that?
Yes.
Okay. So then we have a motion on the floor, and why don't you provide it one more time, if you would, for everybody? We'll put it to a two-thirds vote. I just want to make sure I've got the right categories.
Certainly. It's 60-410-2 operations to be set at 454,400. And on the sheet of paper I gave you, I may have got the numbers wrong, but the following line item would be the emergency reserve fund for water, and that would be set at $50,000.
Got it. Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Okay, deems it carries by the two-thirds required. The next one was on the sewer operations?
Correct. We have a similar approach for the sewer operations fund, Mr. Moderator. We're proposing account number 61-420-2 operations be set at $688,840, and the subsequent reserve fund be considered an emergency reserve fund for sewer and set at $50,000. And these numbers are based on some additional consultation with the sewer department.
Okay, so the motion is that on account number 614202-operations, the allocation be set at $688,840, and that on account number 61421-2 be established for emergency reserve fund sewer at $50,000.
Correct.
Questions or comments? Okay, and the Warrant Committee has reviewed this and recommends passage of this motion. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed?
No.
Okay, I'll deem it passes by the two-thirds required. Okay, so this is the master motion on Article 15 on our budget. I'll read this again. The budget, Article 15, to move that the town appropriate the sum of $56,318,527 to defray operating expenses of the various town boards, committees, commissions, departments as printed in the warrant report and/or is amended by this town meeting for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2015, as required by General Law's Chapter 41, Section 108, and that to meet said appropriation, the following sum be raised on the fiscal 2016 tax levy or transferred from accounts or funds as follow. From the fiscal year 16, tax levy, $50,832,997. From the bond premium on the $4.2 million bond issued on 6107, $4,375. From the bond anticipation note for interest reimbursement, $60,438. From the premium on Sommeil Brooks bonds, $1,261. From the school building assistance multi-school projects fund, $1,198,535. From the overlay surplus, $79,505. From the stabilization fund, $100,000. From the cemetery perpetual care interest account, $6,000. From the pension reserve fund, $100,000. From the mass pollution abatement trust, Title V Health Septic Loan, $4,100. From the stabilization fund for advanced payments of sewer betterments, $400,000. From the water enterprise fund, $1,879,660. And from the sewer enterprise fund, $1,651,656. So that's the motion. Questions or comments on the budget? If there are none, we'll put it to a vote. It requires a two-thirds vote. All in favor, please say aye. Opposed? I'll deem it carries by the two-thirds required. Article 16 is our capital budgets. I'll make the motion. We'll move that the town appropriate the sum of $1,8634 for capital expenditures, as recommended in the capital budget, as amended, and to meet said appropriation, the following sums be raised on the fiscal 2016 tax levy or transferred from accounts or funds as follows. Before I read that, I'm going to read the projects and the request. If you want to put a hold on any of these capital budget items, please just loudly call out hold. Under the Board of Selectmen, the website redesign, Board -- is that a halt? No, hold. Under the Board of Selectmen, the Town Hall, HVAC. Under the Fire Department, portable radio replacement. Under the Fire Department, fire alarm upgrade. Under Building Inspections, replacement vehicle. Under Youth Outreach, renovation and the furnish of, furnishing of a new office. Under the Council on Aging, to replace the front and side doors. Under the Conservation Commission, land acquisition and management. Under the School Department, at Wheelock School, front entry parking lot restoration. Under, replace the freezer at the Wheelock School. Under the Wheelock School, remove abate, retile three classrooms. For the Blake School, auditorium repair, waterproofing and masonry. For the High School, replace the band uniforms. Under the district-wide security system upgrade and a field study. For the Police Department, a replacement cruiser. For the Police Department, a radio system upgrade. For the Public Works Department, cemetery, columbarium. Under the Highway, Chapter 90, Elgin Pelican Dual Street Sweeper, a CAT 906 H2 compact loader, a CAT 930K, a MAC GU 713 snowplow. Under the Highway, a Kubota M1099 SHDC tractor, resurfaced subdivisions, a Flint Sander LMC 5H. Under the Parking and Recs Department, a new community center study, and to be funded by the tax levy, $377,900. Let's look at the two items that we have on hold, capital items. The first one, under the Board of Selectmen, was the website redesign. Microphone number two.
Dan Bible, 23 Green Street. The website is really not as good as it could be, and it's not as good as many other towns. other towns. $20,000 may not go enough, go far enough to make it something we can be proud of, but it really is very difficult now to find things on the website, and I think it would be a vast improvement to put some money into redeveloping and redesigning it.
Good. Further questions or comments? Motion?
I would move that the $20,000 be, be appropriated for the redesign and redevelopment of the website.
Good. This motion will require a two-thirds vote, $20,000 appropriation for the redesign of the website. Under the Board of Selectmen, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
I'm gonna deem it does not rec, uh, pass by the two-thirds required. Do we need two-thirds on that?
The two-thirds or not depends on where at the sources. If there's any bonding involved or transfer from stabilization, that's where the two-thirds is coming from.
Okay, so, and just infer a capital budget expenditure that would not require two-thirds. Let's do that again. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay, would you raise your hands, please, all in favor? All opposed? I'm gonna deem that it fails to carry. There was a handout on the way in, I'm being reminded by the warrant committee, that in terms of capital budget expenditures, under the School Department and under the High School, that the, uh, the allocation request for high school replacement of band uniforms was 45,000. The recommendation that we have voted on is zero for that. It's not apparently what it reads in the warrant report, but it was what it read in the handout. So, any questions or comments on that? Okay, we have one other item then to consider, which was under the Wheelock School, the front entry parking lot restoration. It was, the request was 97,000. The recommendation from the Capital Budget Committee was zero. Somebody put a hold on that.
Yeah, I'm Kenneth Manning, 11 Pueblo Road. And I wanted to hear from the warrant committee why you recommended against fixing the parking lot. Wheelock, as we know, accommodates kids in second and third grade, and judging by the audience here, I don't see many of those folks, and it's been a long time since most of us have been in second and third grade. The parking lot at Wheelock is really in deplorable condition, has been for quite some time, and I'm wondering why the warrant committee said that it should not be repaired?
I can speak briefly to that. I mean, that was the recommendation of the Capital Budget Committee, who is working within an overall budget, and so I think the committee decided it wasn't a sufficient priority compared to the other items that were funded this year, and the warrant committee, in reviewing the recommendations of the Capital Budget Committee, was not looking to add additional expenses into the budget this year.
Okay. This was requested by the School Department, is that correct?
Uh, yes, all of the items that are listed under the School Department were requested by the School Department, and I assume the, the School Committee or Dr. Marsden can speak to the relative priority of those items in the eyes of the School Committee, which is represented on the Capital Budget Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Jeff Marsden, Superintendent. This has been on the capital plan for probably three or four years, and we didn't put it as a priority, because we think that going forward, if, if the town does approve in three or four years, the Dale Street School, New Dale Street School, we would be able to build that behind the land, the Wheelock, and incorporate that, that new entryway into that project.
So then you're not saying that this is a priority from your perspective?
It was not a priority for us in FY '16, no.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions and comments on the capital budget? I'm gonna reread the motion. Article 16, move that the town appropriate the sum of $1,8634 for capital expenditures as recommended in the capital budget. As amended, to meet said appropriation, the following sums be raised on the fiscal 2016 tax levy or transferred from accounts or funds as follows. From the tax levy, $377,390. From the sale of cemetery lots, $55,900. From Chapter 90 funds, $558,844. From trade-in slash auction value, $16,500. All for the sum of 1,000, excuse me, $1,8634. And to authorize the Board of Selectmen to sell, trade, or otherwise dispose of vehicles, and to apply the proceeds from such transactions toward the purchase price of new vehicles. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the capital budget passes.
Hi, I'm Jeff Marsden, and you're watching medfield.tv.